If it's enough money to worry about, really. It's not wages, it was in... Yeah. And again, if that money has been spent, it should coast to the stay around 15%. So I don't have to worry about that. Uh, auditors and assessors, I assume we have got their bill, right? For the auditors, how long have they been here?
How long have they been?
A month, I would say. When are they there?
Couple months.
They've seen us though.
Billings.
Yep.
Yeah.
So they're back tonight, so they'll, they'll tie everything up, so they're there for...
But they don't have any, they don't bill us completely, do they? And I bet, I bet it's gonna be fourteen. That's what we... They know exactly.
They know exactly.
Is this true? Yeah.
Alright, and the assessors, uh, they bill us throughout the year.
Yes.
And toward forty-one percent, so that's, that's good. I'll bet that number's a lot higher when property taxes go up dramatically, right? Everybody wants it up there.
Everyone wants, yep.
Yep. Uh, legal is high. And we haven't, some of this is stuff that's more or less fixed. It's the Fairpoint lawsuit, correct? That's a lot of what Bernie still does.
Yep, yep. But I'm noticing that we pulled out five thousand dollars for the Fairpoint settlement.
We pulled that.
We budgeted that, no?
We budgeted that.
I'm trying to remember if we did that.
Five thousand thousand.
Thinking that we would start, I think, did we say we wanted to start getting a real bill for what those expenses were? Yeah, so what we would actually want to do would be to break out Bernie's, uh, Fairpoint work and put it under the Fairpoint settlement line. That's not an immediate thing, that's not a do it. But let's put that on the list of things to do so we can understand what the cost of that is.
Will it ever be settled?
Probably not.
I think the lawyers have come up with a brilliant way to just milk the heck out of you for our... And the carrot gets bigger and bigger and bigger. Alright. Employee benefits, that's all been moved out to other areas with the exception of workers' comp. And... Would these move elsewhere and we didn't clean it up here, or... So it shows we spent five hundred bucks on...
Workers' comp.
And I know for a while there we had this deal where we didn't really pay anything even though we budgeted lots. Is that still going on this year?
You know, I'm gonna have to double check on this because we do not have an outstanding workers' comp. So let me look into this.
Yeah. You know, yeah, I don't remember all the details of this, but for some reason, we ended up going a couple of years without having to pay workers' comp stuff. And, uh, but we had to budget for it in case they did want to bill us, I guess. And, uh, it's there. Good, that might be some amount of money. Uh, planning and zoning. They have not requested wages yet, is that Melanie and that's it?
That's Melanie.
And she hasn't billed us?
She bills us a couple times a year, so now we haven't received anything.
Have you informed our statutory limitations policy on billing us for wages?
Same thing goes for fire day, it fires the same thing, yeah?
First of all, then, yep.
I came down here to attend their meeting last night to find out that there was no meeting here last night. There was Meek Glenn and Matt Sax that showed up and Matt thought that there was a meeting, but they've evidently moved it to next week, so we'll try that again. And... Yeah, they're fine, I know in the past they've, uh, gone high in supplies and stuff like that. They're fourteen percent. Alright, general government, here we can look and see what money we actually have to repair doors and stuff like that. So general government wages, and whose are these, are these you, or...
Well, this is your, our cleaning person.
Oh, I know, there we go. So we should give all people support. Uh, yeah, so she's a little bit low, so you guys are keeping the place nice and clean, that's good. All this worn down, can you really work that line out, Ms.? I know I've asked this before, I just need to...
Alright, what is that?
Um, if I remember correctly, this is, um... Isn't this that email money that we got?
Well, it wouldn't be difficult to know about that.
Uh, you know what, I can't remember.
Yeah.
I can't remember what this was.
Note that if you find out, send us an email, I'm, I'm just curious, I can't remember either.
We've been going over, we've been going over files, so I'm, I don't necessarily know.
It might have something to do with emergency. Does that, wasn't for inspections or something?
That's, that's what I was thinking.
Well, that's what I wanted to, for, um, inspections or...
They permit for something?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, but we may be able to put that money to use. Alright, uh, we have no grant money in there. And now we get into the breakdown of Friendly Meal's insurance, we haven't paid any of their insurance or it hasn't been assigned to them. In other words, we keep paying our insurance costs and it seems like whatever portion of that is Friendly Meal's just hasn't been charged yet, but that's okay.
I'm not sure that Linda had a great way to break that down, how that was...
Yeah, and last year was the first year we tried to break it down, so we expected it to be a little off.
Yep.
Um, and the rest of the Friendly Meal, uh... Bills were based on last year's bills and then probably rounded up a little bit, so...
Over the estimate.
Yeah. It's a ballpark, it's low.
Well, yeah.
But when you're going against the ballpark, it's kinda hard to say you're right or wrong. Um, electricity's dead on, heating oil, a little high, but not much. I don't know if we've had a three percent increase in the cost of heating oil. We are under the by, aren't we, with...
We are...
With the school district?
No.
No?
Not with the oil, yeah. Not with the oil, only with the electricity, so I asked Linda. So we are on the search to, um, figure out exactly what the lowest cost and what company will be working with.
Okay. Uh, the cost of a library is eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-three cents every year.
Have you put oil on that?
At that library, you're gonna make that library oil if you want that.
Yeah. Yeah, the oil did never happen. Kelly, were we on a contract last year with the oil, weren't we? Okay, that's a half. But the person that we, um, deal with is no longer there. So we will see if we can get it for this year. We are locked in for the electricity, not locked in with the oil.
Yeah. Towards the end of last year, we weren't a hundred percent confident that prices would continue to hang out a little bit. Okay, uh, supplies, a little high. GG buildings.
Yep.
So you got thirteen, a little less than thirteen thousand, twelve thousand, six hundred and somebody like that.
Well, you got mine in it, that's all I care about. That's what's on the energy needs.
Yeah. Alright, overall, general government, thirty-seven percent.
Efficient, efficient government, yeah.
That is...
Not oxymoron.
I was gonna say.
Trump, Trump.
I got another one. Uh, cemetery. Uh, high in wages, do they take a stipend, or is that just, do they get billed for mowing, or...
Um, they give us a time period.
Okay. So...
But then at a certain point, maybe reimburse.
Is there a trust behind that, maybe?
Um, I don't know. I don't think it was meant for the cemetery.
Or cemetery trustees?
They, yeah, in the library, so there would be cemetery trustees in the library that would get reimbursed, so, um, Bernie don't know exactly what that figure would be.
Could lead up to the four thousand.
It would be, yep, okay.
Uh, it goes up to the four and then they take them next, well, we think they're gonna leave them hanging.
Alright, so overall they're high, but we're not talking about a lot of money anyway. And hopefully we get, uh, that reimbursed.
Ooh, big shirt.
Yeah, that looks like a big delusion out there in the future. Do we have any idea when that comes?
No, but I will double check.
I didn't just sign it, did I?
I think it's yours.
Yeah, this had to do with us having, I think that might have been for our next, uh...
Oh, no, you didn't.
Yeah, this was just the contributor, contribution assurance program for eighteen and nineteen. And this is basically says that there is a cap on how much they will increase it.
Nine percent.
Nine percent.
But you have to agree to buy the insurance from them for the next thirty years.
Right. Like every other town and everything. Alright, uh... So insurance is gonna come to it at some point. Uh, regional associations, have we paid most of those?
I believe so, yep. I'll double check also.
Any of we get dropped?
Oh, yeah.
I thought we had gone over a little...
Southmost region. Yeah, really? Is that... Well, are you putting that in the form of a motion?
I think before you drop them, you need to understand...
We were just getting some.
No. You need to understand what, how much they actually give to Alstap. Maybe you guys don't remember the breakdown that I, maybe Carol, how's that? I will give that to you, two hundreds of dollars.
But we, we would like to look into that.
Yeah. Southwest.
I would too.
So, I will look into that, but you have to understand, Southwest is my first go-to when welfare comes in.
I get it.
But not regional, not regional planning.
Southwest.
It's not regional planning, it's a different one. It's one for municipal services, doesn't it? No, we're talking about Southwest, we're talking about something completely different.
Unless these are all linked in the same...
They're all, they're all part of Southwest, but...
They're all under Southwest, but that's what we'll have to look into.
Okay, so yeah, the question is, how is this broken down?
I can, I can, I'm, I'm, I can't show you, but I'm quite certain they have nothing to do with all.
Maybe it's just, that's how all the brochures come. They may have, they may have branches of other stuff.
I know there's a lot of people in town who would be very upset if we got that cost. But, we can talk about it. It's already paid for here anyway.
I thought the welfare discussion was whether Southwest regional planning was the receiving one.
Our one. That's a, that's a topic for another day.
Yep, uh, okay, uh, it's high, it is what it is, and we're gonna quickly look at what makes up the number in the budget. Uh, alright, so police. Marcello is working somewhat, so a little less than he expected, that's good. Uh, Penny's wages are good. And just as beside Penny's name came up in our shop today, my girlfriend looked at me, she goes, "Do you know anybody named Gendron Brown?" I'm like, "Yeah, there's a bunch of those." "Do you know a Penny?" I'm like, "Yeah, she works in the police department." "She sounds married to Kenny." I'm like, "Really?" She was more excited about that than I was, for some reason. Uh, overtime barely over, uh, so I guess we had a little bit there, not enough to really worry about. Health insurance dead on. Mike is a little high, but it's from a small number anyway.
Yeah, all the small numbers are... Well, I don't know why, we don't remember that much when I heard it.
So they bought all the, uh, you're not the right person to ask, do you have any feel whether they bought all the uniforms that they expected to buy and equipment to get, uh, Adam sent away?
I think uniforms are all set, I'm not sure about the rest of the equipment, or what they're, have left to buy, I don't know, but I think they went on purchasing some other things, but I can't say definitely what those are.
Okay, then I would just reiterate that we need to make sure they're aware of the five hundred dollar cap. And I know they are.
Yep.
Cause I haven't seen a lot of that stuff come across, and I thought some of that stuff may be a little pricey.
We haven't had a purchase order for the police department quite a lot.
Hmm, that's good. Well, actually, we got one tonight. Yes, thousand dollars.
Oh, okay, I see that.
Tires.
Oh, that's just a quote, yep.
That's just a quote?
That's a quote, they want to see if you guys will approve that and then, uh...
I thought it was a bill.
It's just a quote, that's a little sticky, so that we can do that.
Go ahead.
No, but that's something else.
Well, there it is. Let's see what else. It didn't, that's not a quote, it looked like a bill. It's just a quote, it was like a... And then it could be off the top if we want to chat, you know, the top.
Just have a, equipment maintenance repair line and they have a vehicle repairs. Did he indicate on there where he expected that money to come from? I thought there was a note there, I didn't know if it said anything.
Yeah, I see that. Well, absolutely.
Yeah. We, I was just wondering if they indicated where they expected this thousand bucks for tires to come from.
I hope it doesn't come from the local, cause that's already a hundred and ninety percent.
But some of that is stuff from last year.
Yeah, to me, I, I would look at this coming out of either vehicle repairs as a maintenance line or equipment maintenance repair. I don't know if they use, I can't remember, have they used that for vehicle stuff or not? There isn't a vehicle maintenance line, you know what I mean?
Isn't equipment maintenance, he's got money in that.
Yeah.
We don't get a government rate on tires from police?
I have no idea.
Is it like we get for tires at the highway, or, how about the tire service?
We get them through Lloyd. Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. Yeah, we see if he could, uh, find out if these can go through highway and get the state rate or whatever it is. Tires at a hundred and...
Well, I don't understand why there's one six hundred and one three hundred.
Yeah, so is this a set of wheels?
I know, that's what you can't, I can't read it. Can't make sense.
Yeah, no, he is talking about buying tires and rims. He's talking about buying tires and rims and saying, "We will save the old tires and rims to be put on the new cruiser in twenty seventeen." Right. Is he talking about replacing, what vehicle are these going on? Do we have him in next week?
Um, no, ambulance is next week.
Ambulance is next week.
Can, can we wait until, I bet we can wait until he comes in.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, we can drop him now, maybe I'll do that.
He can wait till he gets the newborn next twenty seventeen?
There we go, now we retire that. Uh, alright, overall, um, do you see anything else that jumped out, overall he's at thirty-seven percent, which isn't bad.
Well, part of that because David Howard's just come on the payroll.
Yeah, but that counts, when we hire later, then we got a fifth, yeah. Alright, uh, ambulance, I was gonna say, uh... Uh, mileage, we're only at four hundred and nineteen percent on that. And I thought we were gonna chug a little, so I'm kinda skipping through here. The wages are what they are, ambulance mileage, they've really jumped onto the whole, will carpool and do that. I assume they're carpooling, I hope they are. That's a good question, when we see these high mileage...
Are they carpooling?
Yeah.
I don't like that.
Okay, yeah, I think we, we should be asking that, cause if it's ten guys going to the same place and they're all billing this mileage...
And driving the same time.
There's only been, actually, there's only been, um, one at a time.
But if they carpool, they don't all get mileage, I mean, that's...
Exactly.
Why would they want to do that?
I, I know we don't have like three or four coming in, going to the same place.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah.
When people do, when they come in to tacos, we should ask you guys that. And we already asked him that.
Yeah, when I send my payroll in, anybody that has mileage is on that and I sign it.
Yeah, and what we would encourage you as a department, Ed, is if there's an opportunity for those guys to carpool, it's...
So far, most of it's been individuals.
Okay.
And husbands and wives, and they're not doing two bills, so...
Yeah.
Was paramedic expensive, that lady?
That is what we pay to DeRusio anytime they send an ambulance because we can unrespond to a call.
When they send the medic.
Or a medic, thank you.
And that's low.
That was the idea. Um, yeah, by switching things around and what Jesse's done, we expected to see savings, and I wanted that number to be within over, nobody agreed with that.
But it infuriated everyone, yes.
The high number is in the supplies and none has been billed to personal protection. Has he not got some personal protection stuff out of that three thousand dollars spend?
Well, that's a good question.
I will ask him, um...
I thought we had some stuff that we needed in my...
I know, for a fact. So, they bought sixteen grosses of gloves.
So, this is moving forward, this is something that, I mean, we talked to the auditors and some things have come up, so, um, he's the only one who does not code his bills. So when we call and ask, there is room for error.
Okay.
So moving forward, he is responsible for coding all of his own bills and signing off on those, which is a, um, something that we end up having to email him and get approval. So that he can code them correctly into the line items, cause when I asked him today, he said, "No, no, 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 no." He said, "I'm just saying, maybe why don't we look at that because there's a question that there are things that are not in the right line."
Well, that's good to sign up then, because that means that he's really not over the supply thing.
So I, I know, but he's, he's...
Again, I look at the bottom line, he's at thirty-eight percent, which is good, um, and that is thanks to that paramedic, that's back there.
I, I know he bought a lot of gloves, and, and that would certainly be critical.
So can we note to, uh, maybe put in the minutes when Jesse comes next time, we wanna make sure that we talk to him about coding his bills.
Yeah, and I talked to him today, cause I had him come in.
Yeah, well, I'm the one that did that.
When we talk to him, we'll, we'll ask him how his coding has been.
Okay.
Alright, uh, fire department.
It is that.
Yep, we have, thirty-nine percent, Kim, congratulations. We're gonna skip forest fire.
I forget, where do we come in in the grand total on fire and forestry right now?
I can tell you, we have a lot, twenty-eight thousand, ninety-one. Twenty-eight thousand, what? Twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-one. On forest fire? No, if you open them together. Oh, 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 oh. It's a chart, no. Oh, I hear that. Did you do that to your head? No. You spent forty-three and you had sixty-four. Well, we can just put the two together.
Alright. Um... Emergency management, we pay most of the bills, they'll trump with that, and most of the bills are emergency equipment. Have you got any bill from Blue Cosmo?
Um...
The reason I ask is, I continue to get invoices from Blue Cosmo that are coming to my email box. Remember how you asked me if we needed contact?
They needed, because you're, okay, so, no.
Allow me to forward you some bills.
Okay.
It's only a hundred and forty bucks.
Okay. And maybe we should, they needed, because of the contact, they needed your email, so I would...
Right, but evidently they're only sending those to me, so...
You don't wanna pay them.
I wanna pay them, I just don't wanna pay them.
I think you're wrong, yep, yep, forward those to me.
With eleven fourteen dispatch, you wouldn't have any...
Right.
And...
Yeah. Alright, uh, communications, we've actually been spending on that, twenty-three percent. Uh, DPW, we just went over with David last week, correct? So there should be no real surprises there, let's look and see if there's any surprises. Just carpooling, container stuff.
And that's the same as for last week.
We went over that, we went over sanitation, solid waste.
Park and wages.
It always is. And we will continue to...
It's all about the phone.
Yeah.
Even piece of fiber.
Yeah, well, they'll be paying for firefighters with travel.
Yeah.
So... And we still have sanitation, administration is low. And solid waste is still low. Other than our horrible miscalculation, that was eight percent. Alright, uh, health agencies, I'm on page fourteen, if I'm moving ahead. Do those bills come in pretty much throughout the year, they monthly bills?
They come in throughout the year.
Okay, so we shouldn't expect anything drastic to go further.
Right.
Uh, welfare, as we talked about last week, is low. Library is, library, it's good.
What's welfare, Ohio?
Car repairs, we've paid for car repairs in the past, people couldn't get to work, um, to help them fix their vehicle.
Awesome number. I don't know, it's amazing.
Uh, library is what it is. DPW, Parks and Rec, we're at twenty percent, we talked about that.
I have one question on Parks.
Sure.
The second line down on Parks is Piper and Medicare, Medicare, there's a wage there, is, is there nothing spent?
I am also looking into that, cause that was brought up last week.
Okay.
And Rocks identified a couple companies that are willing to look and give us a quote for some money. Uh, Vile Pool. Budgeted zero, spent forty-five hundred.
That's...
It all passes.
That's a pass.
Um, patriotic purposes. We're good, we spent that.
Yeah.
That was, this year, did they replace flags on...
That cemetery flag, I don't know what all the...
Flags over here?
I think that comes from a different place.
No, patriotic flags come from patriotic, yeah, but we just have to replace the flags now, we're gonna be...
Alright, that's kinda...
I think every year we need to replace some flags.
Vile Pool will undoubtedly, uh, take all of their money for the Vile Pool Festival, I assume. Yeah, so it's gonna put us a little bit over on, on a large number anyway. Uh, Conservation Commission. Uh, conservation commission, they ran high last year too. I think it was, I thought it was supplies last year.
What'd they buy for supplies?
I don't know, you could imagine a racket going on over there. I don't know, well, we've asked that question a couple times, well, it's time for, is there somebody to talk to?
What, I'm saying, what, what's the question, what are they, what supplies, really, conservation?
Yeah, which is like a really round number.
Authorization supplies.
I'll be, clickers for fraud.
Okay.
I don't know if they could possibly spend money on it, I'm sure I'll be informed.
Okay, I will, I will ask, cause that's not really a goal.
Open here for a conservation commission?
Who said it, conservation? Is that Mary Lueblain and Joyce Curl?
Joyce Curl.
John Mann?
John Mann? On the conservation?
Mary Lueblain, I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Yeah, Sarah, Sarah will...
Yeah, there you go.
Is it Joyce on it as well?
Yep.
Alright.
Actually, they're gonna be in next week to talk, so...
That gets us through it. Now, the rest of this is capital improvement funds and transfers and so on and so on. Overall, I don't think we're in bad shape. I think we're in really pretty good shape, realizing we got a few thousand dollars in for our wages. And hopefully that'll be the end of that stuff.
We've still got all summer and fall.
Really?
It didn't move right out there. It's weather driven.
Sometimes weather driven, or sometimes it's, I was gonna say a word that starts with A and ends with hole driven.
Yes, but without the weather, it wouldn't happen.
Agreed.
Irregardless, I know what you're saying exactly, and without the weather, it wouldn't happen.
Thank God, we're in a light winter, that's it, all that's in.
Now, we don't have no water, so there's fires.
Go to the one the other. Alright, uh, any comments from the public?
Last week in the notes, um, we talked briefly about the, the inlet pipe at, um, late morning. And I asked Kim about, um, the pipe thing, because it had to possibly be extended. We haven't used it some year, is, is it functional?
Right.
He talked to you about that.
I'll give that towards you. To look at.
Oh, dry hydrant?
Yeah.
It needs to be replaced. It, it needs to be replaced, it needs to be taken out and replaced with a longer, deeper, further out into the pond type.